We're a little thin on ASD board members, so we'll wait a few minutes.
Oh, okay.
Big thing I'd say is just make sure you leave your micro, uh, your speakers.
Gotcha. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Otherwise, we lose. Probably a street chatter.
Yeah. Um, in just a couple of minutes, like two.
I'm standing in the back.
Okay. Gotcha.
Recording in progress.
Like to call this meeting, joint meeting of the Anchorage School Board and the Assembly to order on June 7th at 10:05 a.m. Welcome to everybody here. Uh, the respective secretaries will call the roll for us.
Member Jacobs.
Present.
Uh, member Bellamy is online. Uh, member Donnelly is also online. Member Higgins? Um, member Lessons is excused. Member Wilson? And President Hallman, you have a quorum. Member Brawley?
Here.
Member Bronga? Chair Constant? Member Johnson?
Here.
Member Littlefield?
Here.
Member Martinez?
Present.
Member Myers?
Here.
Member Rivera? Excused. Member Salt?
Here.
Member Voland? Vice Chair Zalatal? Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If everyone will still, uh, please stand for the flag side.
States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm clerk. I would also note that Ms. Zalatal is excused.
This chair, I, I don't think my, my name was called as well. Mr. Presverdia.
Mr. Presverdia is present.
And I'd like to have Vice President Jacobs to read our landing knowledge.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion and is with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live inland in our community.
Thank you. Um, just as a, as a note, uh, these microphones, you do have to really be on the microphone for everybody to hear. Also, as a personal thing, as an aftereffect of something, my ears are full of fluid, and so I can't hear very well. So, uh, people will make sure they're being heard. I deeply appreciate it. Uh, you should have a copy of the minutes before you from the March 29th meeting. Anyone have any corrections? I'll give everyone a minute. Without objection, the minutes will be accepted as correct. Seeing no objections. Uh, also before you is the agenda for today's meeting. Um, again, without objection, the agenda will be adopted as presented. Anyone have any changes they want to propose? Seeing no hands, we have adopted the agenda. Um, item, section D on our agenda, the first item is fiscal year 25 budget question and answer. That to Superintendent Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we'll go ahead and provide the Assembly with an update on where the ASD budget is at since the last meeting. I'll hand it to our Chief Financial Officer, Andy Rattler.
Thank you. Um, so we do have a few slides to go. Your feedback on this. Is that better? All right, hold on. Okay, so the legislature wrapped up and within their operating budget, they did include some one-time funds for ASD. Um, this slide it says, or Katie can go to the next slide, please. Uh, so we have a list of here's the kind of one-time fundings that were provided to ASD. Uh, the slide says it's awaiting transmission to the governor. However, that happens a day or two ago. So it has been transmitted to the governor, I think with the end of June being the time he has to make any reductions or vetoes to that, to that budget. Um, so included for ASD specifically, there is a one-time operating funds. It was a $680 BSA equivalent, which would provide about $49 million to the district for FY25 only. There was $6.4 million in a maintenance of equity settlement that was appropriated within that bill. Um, a little background of the maintenance of equity settlement, it is, uh, from 2021 to 2022 within the ARP Act and the Esser funds that were provided under that, there was a provision called maintenance of equity where state agencies had to provide, uh, at or more, uh, money per student on an unadjusted basis to districts they did the year before. So they couldn't make per student reductions from 21 to 22, 22 to 23. Um, so, and you just, uh, triggered a whole harmless provision where it would step down funding because we lost over 5% of our students in that year. Um, so that's kind of the basis for the unadjusted thing, or Anchorage being included in this maintenance of equity settlement. Why they didn't specifically reduce the base student allocation, um, on an unadjusted student basis, it did go down because of that whole harmless provision that's actually intended to help districts, uh, step down any losses. Uh, so we would get about 6.4 million out of that. I don't know where the state is at with appealing that to the federal government. Um, I know they were going back and forth for some time to determine what that amount is, but the legislature did appropriate money based on the last correspondence from the federal government to the state saying, here's how much we think you owe districts. Also included in the budget was some K3 reading proficiency funds, which is $180 per K3 student for the district. And then if you're in a Title I school, it's an additional $100. Our student transportation fund is set to receive another 2 million. Also looked like another pot of one-time money. So none of this is something we can plan for going forward to FY26. Uh, not included on the slide, there was about a little over 9 million that we cited to receive on the capital budget for major maintenance, and that would be reimbursement for roofing projects that we've done across the district over the last couple of years that are on the list. Um, all this, of course, is still subject to the governor's veto pin. Um, but this is what we're looking at right now. So as we get further in, in the process, um, we may have money we want to add back into our budget, some of this one-time money. Uh, a lot of it'll be to offset a lot of the savings that we're planning to use so far. Um, so if we go to the next slide, this is kind of the really, really rough outlook we have for, um, FY, the revision and FY26 and kind of what that looks like. You know, if we look at FY26, if you take out all that one-time money, you know, the bottom line is down there at the bottom right, that's 71 million. Um, that would be our base deficit if we retain our 8% fund balance minimum. Um, it assumes 3% inflation and no changes in enrollment. So this is really, really, uh, high level, very preliminary, don't kind of count on it, but just kind of give you an idea of the scope that we might be looking at of what, um, the 26 might be. But you can see we add back the one-time money for the FY25 revision and then reduce our reliance on fund balance. Um, if we do add money or add items back into our 25 budget, which the process will be, the administration will come up with recommendations for what to do with the funds, we'll present to the, that to the school board in August for, uh, review and approval at their meetings. Um, so any changes will be in there. With regard to what the Assembly's role is in this, the Assembly approves our upper limit spending authority. Um, so if we were to make significant add backs to the budget that would exceed what's already been approved, then we need to come back to the Assembly for additional approval on that. But it's really only that upper limit authority that we would be seeking approval. And it's really only, you know, if there were, if the board chose or someone chose to add back a significant amount of that one-time funding above what we think we have in our current upper limit authority. Um, but really, again, this is very preliminary, you know, it's the, the downside of kind of providing this so early is that things are going to change and it's not going to look like this. But if that's the number, folks remember that 71 million, then, um, we have to come back and explain it. Yeah, well, there's, here's all the changes that we've made, but generally when we sit, put out that first number, that's what sticks in folks' minds. So just kind of be cognizant of that and talk about it at future meetings. So that's really the general fund budget update or the outlook that we have. If there's any questions, happy to answer them now.
Um, somebody member Johnson?
Yeah, thank you. Um, as, as you pointed out, uh, this was a one-time funding increase as opposed to a permanent, uh, step up in the, in the BSA. And I believe that has some impact or constraints on how you can deploy those funds operationally, like, uh, i- if this was instead of a one-time funding source, an actual jump in the BSA, there'd be more flexibility in there, right? Can you explain if there is and then what the differences are in the one-time increase versus a sustained increase?
Um, not necessarily, uh, flexibility wise, what you can do with, you can do the same thing, the same money. It's the same as if you were to get it in the BSA, but for future planning purposes, you know, it's just one time, it's not ongoing. So instead of having, you know, another 49 million in ongoing revenue, that goes back down to zero. So it's really, how much do you want to add back in anticipation of not what you're going to get in the following year? But as far as what's allowable and legal to spend the money on, nothing changes in that regard.
Okay, maybe I got confused somewhere. I thought there was a difference like for, say, if you wanted to increase teacher salaries or something like that, that since it's not a necessarily recurring, uh, funding increase, that that's a, a, something that comes into consideration.
It definitely does come into consideration. Yeah. I mean, that's something we're looking at is what would we want to increase in light of not being able to get the funding, but um, for next year, we have increased our teacher salaries and for the last several years, we've been kind of steadily increasing them. Uh, even though we haven't gotten any BSA increase since 2017. So while they are tied to how much you can increase or how much you're willing to increase more or less, um, the actual functionality and fungibility of those funds are, they're very similar.
Okay, thank you.
And I might add as a comment that, that if we had regular inflation adjustments every year, we'd be able to run the, the same district year after year. And we do have to come up against a increasing funds for bus drivers, teachers. Uh, if we don't get that adjustment, it means we cut something else in order to make that happen. Somebody member Brawley?
Yeah, thanks.
Actually, just one second. Just note for the record that Ms. Zalatal has just joined us.
Um, yeah, and I'll note too that we, uh, we at the city face the same challenge of, like, how do you actually, uh, increase people's salaries over time? Because we are also constrained by the tax cap, but obviously different situation to you guys. Um, I have two questions. One, um, so I appreciate the showing one-time state revenue. I, I'm mostly, um, so we talk a lot about the BSA, which is a number per student, but I wonder if you could just characterize, because this is also not just the BSA increase, or sorry, not, not a permanent increase, it's a one-time funding. Uh, but it's also other funding. So, so the $100 of BSA, uh, what is that in terms of a total dollar amount?
Is that question related to, like, what the board originally approved in our proposed budget? It had a $100 BSA equivalent in there, is that?
Yeah. And actually, yeah, now that I think about it, also if you can characterize the one-time 680 per student, like, what is that as a total?
Right. So the, so as we look at the $100 in this FY25 proposed in the slide that's up there, that's represented as about 8.8 million. Um, about 2 million of that is local contributions. Um, 7.8 or so is going to be the state share of that. The one-time 680 BSA equivalent is equal to about 49 million. And that's just new state money. So that doesn't anticipate any local match on that. Um, if you wanted a local match on that, you could go up to about 20, up to 23% is what's allowable of that. So I'll get my calculator.
Yeah, thanks. Because I, uh, because we talked so much about that per student number that I was just trying to get a scale in my head of what that is for the total. And then the other question is, I see, um, uh, because I know back in March, when the budget was passed, there was discussion about possible revisions. Of course, we're waiting to see what happens with the governor's veto pen, as you said, but, um, at this point, assuming this holds, uh, does the board have intent to change the budget? Because what it looks like, what, what it looks like is basically happening is, uh, the news, the additional state money is replacing what would have been fund balance, right? So not change to the actual budget expenditures, but maybe, and maybe board members need to comment on that. But that's my question is, do you guys anticipate, uh, making changes to the actual school board budget?
Right. And we'll have to make some changes, um, because this money is also to be due to charter schools. So they'll get their portion of it. So we'll at least have to add that into the budget. Um, but there's probably some other items in there that we've cut that may be necessary. There's some IT equipment, some school supplies, things like that we may want to add back. That'll definitely be a conversation between the administration and the board as to what the appetite is for those add backs.
So at this point, uh, we don't know exactly what it'll look like, but we should anticipate seeing a revised budget coming from the school board. Is that right?
Yeah, I believe so.
I'd like to note that Board Member Bellamy joined us at 12 minutes after 10. Other questions on the budget?
Mr. President, uh, member Jacob, yeah, just for clarity, to member Brawley's question, um, when the board passed our operating budget, the, there was a sentence of language specifically referenced the fact that the, uh, this budget would change based on, um, how the legislature funded and then pending vetoes, and that we would revisit that decision before July 1st. Um, so the timeline's going to be pretty tight, um, but we committed to doing that. And so I would anticipate we'll at least have a conversation, um, as to what that looks like and how we can make those adjustments before this first of year.
Yeah, it, it is something that the board went with, that we really don't know our budget until the governor has done whatever he's done. And we don't know when that will be. At sometime before July 1st, we vote. But, yeah, we, we actually don't know what our revenue is for the coming year yet. Roughly. Any other question? Seeing none, uh, under section E, we have no capital improvement needs that we need to discuss. Um, dropping down to section G, correspondence schools. And I'm not sure who put what on the agenda. So, uh, Superintendent Bryant?
Uh, Mr. President, I, I believe the administration put this on the agenda just to keep the Assembly and everyone aware as to what's been happening with correspondence programming, what's going on with ASD for next year. So just so we're all on the, operating on the same timeline. So there was litigation that was filed at least a couple of years ago over, uh, a dispute that allotment funds were being used, uh, for the direct benefit of private institutions, which would be a violation of the Alaska Constitution. Fast forward to earlier, the spring, uh, Superior Court judge struck down two of the statutes related to correspondence allotments. And what that meant for ASD is that we had to temporarily suspend uh, reimbursing families for their correspondence expenses, because at that time, the statutes had been struck down by the court. With that said, the plaintiffs and the defendants in that case requested a, a stay on that court order, and it was granted until June 30th. So what that means is that now that a stay is in place, the district is able to reimburse families as normal. Uh, but there are a couple of things that are, are happening out there. So number one is on June 27th, the Supreme Court will hear the initial arguments, uh, on the, on the legal dispute. On July 1, the State Board of Education has committed to meet to discuss the topic of potentially emergency regulations to govern correspondence allotments. And this is because if the Supreme Court upholds the Superior Court's judgment, that would permanently strike down the, the current statutes in play. And because of House Bill 202, which was passed towards the end of the legislative session, um, that really affirms that it's the State Board of Education's role to enact regulations that are, uh, in congruence with the constitutional provisions around private school, um, uh, use for, uh, the use of allotments for private school education being prohibited. So all of that to say is that there are a number of unknowns. We need to wait for June 27th to see how those oral arguments are, are heard, what comes from that. And then also to really closely study what the State Board of Education passes as emergency regulations. So the ASD can very quickly pivot to ensure that our correspondence programs can continue. Uh, that, that's the intent of deed, that's ASD's intent. Um, but there are a couple of big milestones that will happen later this summer. So that, that's my report on that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Minnie? Seeing no hands? Thank you. Uh, item number two is the academies of Anchorage.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll take that as well. So, uh, last time when we met with the Assembly, we had provided a high-level vision for what the career academies are all about. And essentially, uh, our initial vision was to ensure that all of our students in ASD at the high school level have exposure to, uh, labor trends. What are the high-wage, high-to-men careers here in Alaska? Uh, it was never the intent to force any family or student to choose one of those careers, but there's a lot of opportunity here in the state, and we wanted through the academies to provide those opportunities to students, and we believe that many will take advantage of those opportunities, um, to enter our workforce, to stay in Alaska and to be thriving members of our community, or go to college and to further their aspirations and also hopefully come here to Alaska to work. So with that said, since we presented to the Assembly, uh, we did have our board meeting on Tuesday, and the school board did pass the, the master plan of the academies, which is a living document that essentially goes line by line through how the academies will operate in a number of different facets. But one thing that happened during that meeting was the school board passed an amendment, uh, that just ensures that the administration is constantly having dialogue with the school board as to how we can continue to improve the program, how we can work on critical functions such as recruiting teachers and retaining them, because the administration's plan would require more teachers in ASD, because we want to provide more classes to students during the school year. So that way, in addition to a career and technical course, they can also take wonderful electives or advanced classes or other things that maybe have interest to them and their families. There is a cost to that. So the board is also giving us the runway to talk about what that fiscal plan will be, whether it's a commitment from the school board, or whether that would be through a grant from the federal government or other source, or a combination of both. And lastly, the, the school board did pass a provision that would allow, um, students in grades 10 through 12 to pursue an alternative to the academies. There may very well be families that understand the value of the academies, but they realize that a career pathway is not for them. And the school board has provided assurances that they'll have an opportunity to opt out and pursue a different pathway. Uh, the administration will be working in the coming months on information related to what that looks like. We don't have those specifics today, but I think it's an important thing that we develop and get right, so that regardless of whether you're the, in the academies or not, um, you're going to be set on, on a great path. So planning will continue. Uh, I think those are the, the big highlights, uh, and what, what does this mean for next year? So, uh, next year, we will proceed as planned, um, which is, we'll implement what's called the freshman academies. So freshman academies are essentially two things. Number one, the district will provide college and career exploration experiences to all of our freshmen at our acomprehensive schools. This also entails a one semester long class where students will learn about colleges, different careers, and also the soft skills needed to be successful in high school. And also some of the soft skills needed to just be a successful adult in the workforce or college. Uh, so students will be, uh, enrolled in that class, and I believe that we're going to see some fruits of that, because this information, there is no systemic way to give that to our young people. And this is a step in the right direction. Uh, but what this also means is there will not be a schedule change next year. Uh, we will continue to have six classes as normal. And, uh, and then we'll use this year to, to really set the stage for the, the board to commit to next steps during the budget process. So that was a lot of information, but happy to answer questions. So that was a lot of information, but happy to answer questions.
We'll start with, um. I win. Hey, uh, thank you for that. I was curious, is there, with the academies, is there any plans to use, um? Assessment or. Um, aptitude test to help guide kids to what they, what they would be successful at, or what they might be happier or like as a career path? Kind of that guidance counselor.
Sure, I, I think that's a great question. So in the design of the freshman academy, one of the outcomes is to help students understand where they're a match. Like what types of careers might be a good path for you? What are the, uh, post-secondary credentials, if any, needed to pursue that pathway? So it, I wouldn't call it an assessment necessarily, but I guess it is a test essentially. What are your skills? What are your interests and aspirations and, uh, what are the matches for you? So in that case, yes.
Uh, somebody member Martinez?
Uh, thank you Chair. Let's think a question, um. When this process began and people started really getting closer to, from vision to, uh, implementation to the recent, um. Vote. Uh, to begin to move forward. One of the early questions that I had were around transportation and the future of transportation. So I, I wonder. Um, as that continues to be a real important area for me, I wonder if, if there are long range. Uh, transportation planning that's done within the school district that fits to the idea of this whole right sizing element. Um, especially as it relates to the idea that we want kids to move around more, uh. The city more with, with respect to experiential opportunities and learning. And so I'm just curious, is there any long range transportation planning with respect to the academy rollout at this point?
There are some long range conversations on transportation, but this is actually something that's been ongoing for several years. Because the school board has incorporated a board guard rail to the administration that essentially tasked me with figuring out a way to increase. Our diversity in our choice programs. So when the board initially passed that guard rail, academies were not in advanced conversations. The, the intent was amongst our alternative and choice programs. Is there a way that we can do things, including transportation to increase? Uh, student enrollment from various neighborhoods in a building. With that said, academies presents a similar opportunity. Uh, there, there have been various dialogues around what, what is transportation going to look like for academies, you know? Uh, in the very early phases, we had mentioned that we would be open the idea of opening up transportation. So a student can go from one academy potentially to another academy. But what's happened since then is we work with a number of tactic teams that have, uh, presented a proposal for what academies will be at which school. And the interesting thing is that there's a really nice strategic overlap of academies amongst our comprehensive schools. So I'm looking at the, the list now. So I'll take education, for example, because that's the academy that's going to help ASD staff in the long run. So we have education academies proposed at five different high schools. So because academies seem to be designed to where they're available at a number of different high schools. I believe that the need for transportation between high schools will be minimal. That, that's part of the design. Will it be perfect? No. Um, one thing that we have in our favor is that if there's space in a high school, a student can enroll in that school. So if a student wants to attend an academy in a different part of town, they certainly could. But what we're talking about, is there a need? Are there the resources necessary to add additional transportation to make that happen for the student? And that's something I need some input from the school board as well, because as we've shared with this group, we're in a transportation deficit. We haven't increased transportation dollars since twenty fifteen. The other thing that makes me a little nervous when I talk about transportation as superintendent is it was just two years ago that we were in this, uh, massive transportation crisis. So I've been a little bearish on increasing our commitment to the number of routes. So our, our reasons for not wanting to commit to transportation for academies is not because we don't think it's a great idea, but I, I want to be realistic about the constraints. And also the realities. So when we studied the academies in different districts across the nation, the appetite for students to leave their home school. Uh, for a different pathway at a different school was very small and I don't have any reason to believe that that would be different within ASD. Um, there may be other reasons why a student would want to leave their home school, but not necessarily for the academy, especially when. Um, there's a pretty nice cross-section academies at most of the comprehensive schools. So I, I hope that helps. It's not off the table. But within the design, I think there's a path to where there's a minimal need for transportation for academies. Um, though we still need to meet that board guard rail on choice programs within ASD.
To follow up. The academies. When you described the rollout, it seemed that there were, there were real world implications to the current situations to being able to roll it out. As people vision versus what people want, like for example, the level of staffing. Uh, you described increasing staffing levels would be required to actually roll out. The full vision of, of the idea. So there is some. Long-term visualization with respect to either levels of staffing. And so separately in my mind, and maybe perhaps this opens up a larger conversation, but. There's a school district. Having moved away from maybe the catalyzing element of what the academy model could be to a transportation conversation. Um, is there? What is the, what is the, the, the planning and the long range understanding of just in general? Is, is it the position of the, of the school board to say that? They will continue to look at ways to expand their current. Um, school busing, or is there some sort of intentionality of thinking of? A whole new way to approach that with respect to public infrastructure and public transportation?
No, I would say that there's definitely an appetite to explore different options. Again, the, the biggest short-term constraint in my mind are just the number of qualified bus drivers to put in the buses. Um, but is there a greater vision to expand transportation for choice programs? Absolutely. Um, we're just still, um, in the middle of figuring out what is the best way and time to implement that.
I'll just close, Chair, with this thought. I would think that there's a dollar number that probably hits a current, a, a, a threshold of a ratio where. The cost of transportation is actually taking away from the educational outcomes of students. And so I would really want to be clear about, hopefully that we can have that as a guiding. A guided star to be able to navigate this conversation and for future advancement. Thank you.
Assemblymember Bron.
Thank you Chair. Um, I, I am so excited about this. I, if you give some real world to education and make it more meaningful and, and help. Create. A pipeline of, of students heading toward jobs that we need and careers that we need. But I am concerned about, we have a teacher shortage. This will take more teachers. And teachers are stretched very thin. And, um, to, to have to. I mean, it, this may create excitement for them to learn new teaching methods and learn about. Um, the curriculum they're going to be teaching, but it is asking a pretty heavy lift of teachers to. To get this figured out and, um, I worry about that. Um, and then. The, also the cost of the program over, you know, it, it is going to be more costly. Um. To remember, um, Martinez's. Equities in it, um, I had a person reach out to me last night and she's a teacher aide. And, um, she's really concerned that. Like South Anchorage has maybe a, a law track and so may. And I haven't seen who's going where, but she, she threw that out there that. There'll be certain schools that have the, the more higher, the high paying careers in their, um, I guess we're not calling them tracks, but. In their program and that it may create these inequities. And, um, I know the busing is. Busing rules. ASD and what we can do, but, um, you know, I, I think. They do have people overpasses, all students can ride for free, so that may be one way, but we really need to look at. Are we creating all of like, like the low level jobs at Bartlett and, um, the, the more high power things are all going to be at South? Um, and I, I, as I said, I haven't seen what that looks like. Um, I, it's a, I actually am glad to hear that. People could opt out. I think that will put away, um. Some of the concerns that they're not going to get the robust education, but then I don't know how you. I know I, when I taught health, there were kids that opt out, at out of, um. Human growth and development and then basically you had to create. A different curriculum for them. Well, you were teaching human growth and development, you had to have something for this kid that didn't do it, so. That's going to cost more to have a second path going on. And then I'm hoping, I think I heard, um, something about, um. You know, helping choose the right path, you know, interest inventories, but also I hope that there will be. Um, some education on, is this a ri- realistic, hireable? Cl- I, I have so many friends whose students went to college at highfalutin private. Universities, came back to Anchorage un-hireable. And then had to go back to school for something that really was realistic for a career. So to, to really help students hone in on, um, something that they're going to college for that is realistic. To, to live in Anchorage and work and, and, uh. There, there's more than what you're interested in, also what you can make a living on, so. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Ms. Brunga. I think those are some great points, uh, and, and I want to, for the record, raise a, a couple of things that I think will address your concerns. So number one, when we designed the academies, we wanted to make sure that we were of being, providing equitable opportunity for students. So you mentioned the, the law pathway at South High School, so we're pleased to say that the. Law and public service academies would be offered to Bartlett, Diamond, Eagle River, East, South and West. And that's how the academies are working in other industries as well. There's a pretty rich cross-section amongst different schools. So it's not a matter of haves and have-nots, if you will. If there is a one-off academy at a school, the reason is likely because there's some sort of specialized infrastructure. That was already at that school in a current career pathway and we wanted to make this as cost, uh, neutral. As possible for the school board, because right now the cost is about three point five million dollars. Um, and really leverage the infrastructure that was already there. While we buy ourselves time and future bonds or future discussions to figure out how do we expand that opportunity for all? While also leveraging the King Tech Career Center to provide those opportunities to students who may not want to go to their comprehensive school and go to King Tech instead to pursue some specialized field. Uh, so I feel that our design, uh, is pretty strong in that sense and I, I think that. You and I are both on the same page around really providing students with the skills that they need as soon as possible. Really, the, the vision here. Is provide students with great soft skills, industry-based credentials, dual credit before they leave our doors, because. One of the things that, um, bothers me i- is some of our post-secondary outcome data in ASD. So a lot of parents cited a very strong college-going culture in ASD, you know, about fifty percent of our students do enroll in college. Um, I think that's, that's pretty strong compared to other large urban districts, but the problem is that six years later, less than twenty-seven percent of those kids get a degree. Some of those students are exactly like the ones that you mentioned, where they might have gone to school, it didn't quite work out, they came back and now they have debt or they need to go back to school to kind of figure out where their path is. Or they may have gone to college and majored in the wrong thing, because they didn't know all the different options in industries and pathways. They might have thought the only way to make a decent living was to be an engineer or a doctor and there happens to be other opportunities to make a decent wage too. So I think the design will, in my mind, really, uh, shrink that gap between those who enroll in college and those who graduate from college. And then also for those that maybe don't see college as the short-term solution, they want to go directly into workforce, they can do so. In such a way to where they're not in a minimum wage job, they're in a high-demand, upscale career. That ideally is based here in Alaska, because the fact of the matter is, is we're losing one in three young people by the time they turn twenty-five and we've got to turn that around as a city.
I heard the superintendent not to look too closely at the four-year graduation rate. As a classroom teacher, I always told my students, you should all go to college, it was the best twenty years of my life and it, and it was. Assemblymember Zalikov?
Yeah, so. It's a lot to unpack around the career academies. I was really excited when they were announced, um, really attracted. Um, I'm really disappointed at how it's turning out, um, and for some other reasons I think have been expressed here today. I was really disappointed to see the trap or the various career academies not being the same at all of the schools. Um, I was actually quite shocked at that, um, as someone who's working with their child to think about high school and high school options now as she's entering eighth grade. Um. It really changed the game is what, how we were looking at it. And I think for parents as they were looking at, I think, you know, it was kind of pitched, career academies were coming out. And right, it didn't matter which school you might be zoned to, you would have kind of equal access, uh, to the career academies. I don't think so. I think it's just become another cho- school choice factor. Um, and that's hard, because that's where inequities are built in around transportation or otherwise. Also, it's a hard choice. School within a school, right? How do you balance the career academy option with all of the other options within ASD and how do you make them work? Um, together, instead of making a choice about a career academy versus a particular type of learning option, um, at one of the comprehensive high schools. Um, then I was also really disappointed to see about the opt-out, quite frankly. We are either in or we are out. I feel like this is a classic example of Alaskans' failure to commit. Um, it, it feels like we're not all in. And I understand that there are budget issues and finance issues, but then maybe we delay. And get all in, because I think it's a great idea, but I think we have to be all in for it. Otherwise, it's going to be a half measure. Um, and. As someone who's very vested in ensuring that we are bringing up the next generation of residents for this community who have the skills and the ability to be in this community, who want to be in this community. I think we have to show them we're all in. Um, and this doesn't quite feel like it's all in. Um, so those are just some of my observations. I wanted to share them with you here today, because we've been watching it. We watched, we're actually watching it as a family, um, and I think that. It's just, it's not quite there. I, again, I was really excited when it started. Um, but I, I would really, um, I'll be interested to see how your first freshman class goes. Um, what the, I hope you survey the students. I hope you survey the students at the beginning and at the end. I would really like to hear from them about what they think the usefulness of that is. And then track how many opt-in if there's still the opt-out av- um, opportunity. Because I think that that first introduction will be where you either grab them or you don't. Um, and so, um, I'll remain cautiously optimistic but skeptical. Um, because what I'm really hoping to see for a high school education in Anchorage is one that. Prepares students for whatever pathway they want, where they can then envision that pathway leading them to be in Anchorage. Thanks.
Somebody, or did you want to respond to that or?
Uh, well, I, I appreciate your being cautiously optimistic and, and I, I respect your sentiments and concerns, uh. When we develop which academies would be at which school, I, I do want to share that it was really a local-driven process. In collaboration with their partners that are helping us figure out where are the workforce needs, but if there are particular pathways that you feel. Might present inequities, we could certainly chat offline, um, but I might need more information on that.
I think the process was flawed, right? You have schools where the engagement is just going to be fundamentally different because of the population served. I mean, if we need to be honest about what is actually happening in our schools and the makeup of those schools. And right, and if you don't have, like, if you're looking for parent engagement to drive that, you're just going to have different levels of parent engagement based on location. Um, because of different socioeconomic factors, different levels of, uh, accessibility to the engagement. The school district tries really, really hard and does really well to do engagement on a lot of different levels. But some just aren't going to if they're working two and three jobs or whatever the case may be. And it really, I think, showed in the list of the academies by school. That where I would have expected there to be additional engagement, there are more options. So it, 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 it feels like haves and have-nots in the end, um, to me. So I, I think, right, as. You learn from the feedback from the freshmen as well, I hope that they can help, um. Mold what academies might be in various locations as well. What is the interest of the students who are already supposed to be going to those schools? Because they're, they're, that's not really factored in, because you don't have those students yet, because they're all in middle school right now.
Uh, somebody member Perez for deal.
Thanks, I, I'll, uh, try to be brief and I, I will also admit that, um. That I, I likely do need to actually schedule a time to sit down with you and. And Sven and others and really dig deeper in, into this, um, because I, I am. I'm experiencing a similar feeling of a, a great deal of concern. I come from a family of educators who, um, who, you know, taught. In the, in the sixties and the se- seventies and, and, um, and, and. In the in the sixties and the seventies and 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 terms like tracking. Sent up big red flags for me about, you know, how we. How we separate kids into areas and and what that ultimately does in their experience. And that the language I'm hearing is is shifting dramatically from what I remember lifelong learning. And preparing children to be good citizens and humans. And creating opportunities for them to explore our opportunities, careers. But but the school system is not what it was when it was formed in this country, which was essentially just a a process to to produce widgets who would do work in particular fields. So this feels a little scary to me, to to be quite honest, and even using words like soft skills. That you mean human skills, you mean humanity, right? So when we're, if we're, I I'm worried that we're we're maybe shifting too, too, too far. So I. I'm I'm concerned as well. I'm concerned that 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 there will be significant difference between the kids who go into track A and to track B. And then all of a sudden, those kids who are in track A will be with. Kids of the same socioeconomic level, kids of of the same, I don't know, worldview. And so a lot of this sort of amazing things that happen in our public school systems, where we're able to create. You know, dynamic experiences for kids to grow and learn as as people, we're going to limit those. So that that's that's, I'll I'll stop there and just say, I I definitely have concerns about it. I I think the ultimate goal, sure, is to. Is to create opportunities to for kids to develop the skills necessary for them to live a great life and to have a career. And that's, I think, great. When we start to introduce those opportunities and how limited those opportunities are and. And whether they're now in that track and they can't get out because something else has changed in their life. Those are the things that I worry about. And I worry about our school system being primarily a tool to produce workers. That's that's not the school system that I I want. So I I realize that's a lot of big things and I realize there's a lot I don't don't know. And I and I'm really anxious to learn more about it and and to see a long-term vision for what this looks like in ten, twenty years. But I will say some of the language I'm hearing and some of the the structure I'm seeing. Feels like it's going backwards and not forward. And I think sometimes when we find ourselves in an economic downturn, when we find ourselves. As a society struggling, we're we're, we we get scared and we want to produce workers who can make them make money. And I think that's important, but I I think we should make sure we're not losing sight of of the bigger purpose of what is of what a public school district or system is. So that's my. Statement, but I'll, like I said, I have more more to learn. Thanks.
Assemblymember Brawler.
Yeah, thanks. And I I appreciate the discussion. I know we're probably echoing some of the things you guys have already heard, right? I guess I just want to share my perspective and I know President Holman has already heard this. I was one of those kids who basically was self-tracked into thinking I was going to be an academic, right? So purely college-focused. I was lucky enough that, you know, my my family didn't have a ton of money, but I was not obligated to work while I was a student. That was a choice I could have made, including summers. But really, I spent, you know, seventeen years going to school, basically, maybe eighteen, I think, if you count kindergarten. And I I literally thought I was going to be a history professor. And so what happened then is is later. Well, after I got out of high school, well after I got out of undergrad, I realized. That that was not the path I wanted to be on. And then I, and then all of a sudden I was in the work world. And what happened because I had not been exposed to those things. For the most part was I undervalued myself in the job market. I didn't understand the skills that I had, and it was hard for me to translate those skills into. Those other things. And and I say that mostly in reaction to some of the. I guess the the opinion pieces or things we've seen in the paper from parents who are so concerned about their college. College-track kids, and I don't think they're using tracking in the way that that Mr. Perez Verdia was, right? They're they're thinking like, I want to prepare my kid. To have that that rich experience for college, not monetary rich, but enrichment. But but I think there is a lot of value, and that's why I'm excited about these academies in making sure that even the kids who perceive or or that their parents perceive. That they are the ones who are going to go to college and grad school and all those other things. And and they're on that that particular path that they have exposure to these other things early. Because even if you want to go into, say, music performance or, you know, working in an academic setting or any of those other things that require a fair amount of education. You also need to understand how those things work as businesses, really, or as organizations. And then I was also looking at the the different academies. The one kind of piece that I don't see explicitly called out here is. And I guess it's a general lumping together, but things like arts, culture, museum, and then also nonprofits development. You know, there's a whole world that's like nonprofit administration and that is different than kind of the for-profit world. And also just the idea that if you, again, if you want to go into something like music or performance theater. That 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 you, it is really helpful to understand the the monetary side of that, how to run a budget, like what is the practical. Pieces of running a museum, for example. So so I know you guys, there's already a lot of work that's gone into this, but I would also say there's ways to integrate that idea of folks who. Want to have kind of those, the the more cerebral experience or the more. Performance-based experience. And again, I'm responding partly to some specific things that have been written more than the ASD materials. But I also encouraged it to Mr. Perez Verdia's point. Having students mixed together, I think, is good for for everybody on the socioeconomic spectrum, including the kids who. Again, you know, are on what is a self-perceived path to go on to higher education or become an executive or, you know, whatever that is. I'm not one of those kids, but. But yeah, I think it is valuable. And and then the other thing I'll say too is the most valuable experience that I had looking back. In school, and I I went to public school all the way through, was never in, gifted a talent program, any of those other things, but I did go to good suburban schools that had. Plenty of funding is the theater program. And the value of that theater program was. It was outside of school. It wasn't a class, although there were classes you could take. It was really that I had, I got to mix with other kids who. Struggle to succeed in a traditional classroom but are very smart, can work with their hands and and doing tech theater, you know, and and a lot of those kids, my peers, went on to become. People who run production venues or, you know, they 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 have a career in that and there is a direct connection between. What people think of as just an extracurricular club activity and career. So that's partly why I'm such a big supporter of the arts and theater and exposing, because there is a career path there as well. And it helps kids see the value in themselves that is outside of when they may be struggling in a classroom or they have other barriers that make them. Challenged academically there. So anyway, all that to say, I I am excited about this program. I I acknowledge all of the concerns that have been heard. But I think it's really important to understand. And I I hear the concern about that we're just, you know, creating workers out of our out of our school system. But I think. I I would also encourage folks who are thinking very much about, oh, I I don't want my kid to just be on the the voc-tech track or whatever that is, to think about the fact that that. Those skills can apply in a wide variety of situations and 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 I look, if I can be helpful on. This kind of thinking about arts, culture, nonprofit, it's not one one category, right? But if there's, that seems to be a missing piece here. I guess that's what I'd like to share, but I appreciate the work that's been done.
Boardmember Higgins.
Well, I, there you go. I do appreciate the fact that I understand this is a moving document. There is, we got funding right now for fifteen million dollar money. It's gonna, in three years, we're gonna have to have. Additional money, three and a half million, we're gonna need six and a half million in sick. We don't have right now, a lot of this is going to be influenced by money right off the bat, depending upon what the state does. If we've cut twenty, thirty, forty million, whatever we're going to do. Cutting three million is huge because that means everything has been cut and might even affect hockey too, but it's going to affect everything out there, okay? And so that's it, that's an issue. I do appreciate the comments about where it's going. Year and a half ago, I attended the National School Board Conference and did a presentation on AI. One of the two people that created it and and the changes that's going to go on and how that's going to impact in education and what are we supposed to do is going to be huge. Human resources background, that's going through transitions like mad right now. But everybody's going to be impacted. But one of the things they said. He said was that they asked it to eliminate attorneys and the response was no, it's attorneys using AI are going to eliminate other attorneys. I like that comment. Because it tells us that those shot, those career fields are still going to be there. There's things that have to be done, we're going to do it differently, but we still need to move forward. One of the comments I remember most from King Career Center when they were giving awards to these students who with the top in their class. And they gave it to one and she said, she said. They just done a presentation on photography. She said, I took that class and sometimes you take things to find out what you don't like. Part of what we're doing is really giving them a chance to explore different options in line with it. I started off in. Engineering and realized I'll never graduate because couldn't do it, but and then just took easy classes and ended up in my career field. I think I think the movement in this way, but the flexibility here, we can't hire teachers, how is that going to impact things? They want to, they, the goal is to expand the number of credits per 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 student. So it goes from six to eight. That's a big workload issue. So there's a total number of credits for a thousand kids is six thousand and now it becomes eight or something like that. All those are big factors of recruiting and retaining staff that we're running into massive problems with. So it is, it is going to be a working document. They're going to have meetings, I'm sure, very, you know, in the near future on this. And try to figure out what we can go forward with, what problems are there. I just think the fact that it's a moving document, you know, it's going to be developing. Has got to be an understanding that that it it we don't, the resources are there and the problems we're having in school district overall is going to impact us big time.
Thank you. Assemblymember Myers.
Thank you. I, my comments are kind of in line with members all of hell from earlier. And my question is, you know, in in District Two, for instance, you have a. Maybe more popular high school than the others. So if you have more students wanting to go to Chugiak as opposed to Eagle River, how do you decide which students are going to go? Presumably, you, you know, you've thought that through. I'm just not aware of it. But if you have a program that's full because all their friends go there. And then you have kids that say, hey, I'll take that program because it's not full, just because my friends are going to Chugiak. Or vice versa, I mean, conversely, it could work for Eagle River. What do you do in that instance when you have a higher enrollment at one school and you have teachers limited to the other with lesser enrollment? I guess that's my biggest concern with this.
And again, one of the things that I want to emphasize is that these academies were developed in collaboration with school communities. Sometimes they were parents and other times they were. Other people within that community, whether they were in, let's say, in Eagle River, a local trades association that's conveniently located within that community or others. So, for example, do I anticipate a a large competition between Chugiak and Eagle River? Not necessarily. I have those right in front of me within Chugiak. They would have an academy of business and innovation. And within Eagle River, they would have an academy of business and engineering and their strategic overlap between both. The other overlap would be at Chugiak, there's an academy of health services and education. At Eagle River, there's Academy of Health, Law and Public Service. So while there are some distinctions, there is a lot of strategic overlap. And and I do hope that we can zoom out for a minute. I know when we use terms like career academy, it might seem as though we're. Turning our students into widgets that, and they're just in cubicles all day, learning about different trades. They are taking five additional courses currently that are that are not related to the academies whatsoever. Students are still taking math and science and English. And if the board approves a shift to a seven-period or eight-period day. They're going to have more room in their schedules than ever to pursue theater and electives and advanced courses. Dual credit or current technical education courses that are aligned to their interest and goals. Really, we're just providing. A small framework for students to view their secondary education through the lens of what their career looks like. And all of us understand that most of us end up in careers, some of us go to college along the way. And within all of these academies, I would say every single one of them. They're not tracking students necessarily into these widget factory entry-level jobs. It's quite the opposite. We really need to think about vocational education. As stackable credentials. So you may be taking a course that results in an industry-based credential that leads to an entry-level job. But let's say that you complete a CTE class in health services. You may parlay that into an internship at a hospital and eventually go to medical school, or you may decide that. You want to take a pharmacy tech position right after high school, which would result in a pretty living wage while you decide what your post-secondary career is. So I think we need to give our families and our students more credit when it comes to how they leverage their secondary experience. To parlay into what they're looking for in their post-secondary outcomes.
I guess to drill down a little further, my concern is you have students, they're smart, they're savvy, they watch, they know what to do. They're going to say, hey, I want to go to Chugiak because it's a better football team, so I'm going to pick this instead. Or I'm going to go to Eagle River because it's a better soccer team or cheerleading. I don't know, I'm just throwing things out there. And then they pick what they want to do based on a sports activity or because their friends go there. Because I know it's been an issue in Eagle River in the past is is. You know, people want to sit, I I don't know how it works if there's still a list, if you want a waiver, for instance, to go to Chugiak instead of Eagle River. So is that going to change that? Because now it sounds like they'll be able to choose where they want to go based on what their activity or, you know, what career field they're going to pick.
Right. And practically speaking, there are a lot of different reasons why a student might want to choose a school that's not in their neighborhood. But there are reasons beyond the academies why a student want, would want to stay at their neighborhood school despite the fact they may have a better fit academy somewhere else. I do think there there is that flexibility and I think that students can be successful. If they remain at their neighborhood school, just because of the diversity of different academies and different potential career opportunities within each neighborhood school. I I think it's a fair point. Football is certainly a factor as well in addition to the current tech classes.
Assemblymember Perez Verdia.
No, I just wanted to to say I really appreciate the responses and and and. And and again, this, we're going to see how this role rolls out. I I I think it's it's a, it's a, some of the language, I think, is is the part that's that's making it hard to understand. Because when you say academy, for instance, the word academy. To me, to me says, I'm, I'm, that's, I'm all in, right? As you, I mean, that's, now I'm only that, right? And so that's hard as opposed to, I mean, I took welding, I took auto auto mechanics in 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 high school. I took all kinds of classes where I learned about all kinds of fields and there were people in those classes. That did that work in their professional life. And so I got to meet people who did that work and those were some of the best classes I took in high school. So I'm not sure that that, so that's why I'm kind of, I'm trying to figure it out is is that when we're using words like tracking and academies. It 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 does not feel like a class that I choose in addition to my five other classes. It feels like now I'm in that. Groove and and I both see that as a great opportunity because if it's something I'm really into, then I could take more classes in that. If I really would have loved welding, then I could have taken welding two and welding three and welding four, and I really developed a whole career down that. That would have been great. But I, but I, but I, that was just a choice. I could, you know, so that's what I'm I'm trying to differentiate. So I think in terms of the public. Understanding of this, that's just something that I think is going to help me to to get a better understanding of it. And and as we use these words and as we describe them in certain ways, I think it's going to be helpful to make sure we're all using the same language. And so that we're all clear on what exactly this is. And I and I do think that the comments about. Different schools, different opportunities. I mean, we know that that's, that's, that's one of the biggest challenges that we have, right? Is if we, if we, you know, whether it's, whether it's the what teachers are at what school, what classes are at what school. What sports are at what school, that that's, that's just an ongoing challenge we have as a district. So I I'd like this to not to fall into that same sort of rut. And for us to offer. Classes, I'd love to offer an academy at a, at a, at an, at a, at a neighborhood school that they didn't necessarily say they wanted. Because because maybe they hadn't even thought of it as an opportunity, because maybe nobody in that neighborhood had to have that career. So so anyway, I think there is some value in listening to the community and 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 going along with what they say they want. But I also say, think it's an opportunity for us to create opportunities that maybe they hadn't thought of. So just some additional thoughts. Thanks for the conversation. This has been great.
And I'll interject and ask the administration to correct me if I have the wrong view because I am on the board. I'm not designing classes. But I think a lot of us, when we talk about CTE and academies. We think about what we see at King Tech where a student takes a series of classes. And comes out literally ready to walk into a body shop and start fixing panels on cars. I I think it really more is a flavor, but you can't sell that to the public at all. I taught science. I had no illusion that every student in my class was going to be a scientist or pursue a career in that. But it was important for them to have an understanding. And later, no matter what field they went into. Sort of have a way to look at scientific work and and the outcomes of that and have some level of understanding of it. And I I think the the big thrust of the career academies is to help students get a grasp of the. is to help students get a grasp of the working world. What it looks like when you go to work every day, what you do in an office, what you do in a shop, what you do on a job site that's outside. Um, and if, if they go through one of those tracks, which is, is a term we're using, but they go on to do something that's completely academic, that's, that's not a failure and hopefully will not be a waste of their time at all. But, but that they've seen and learned things that will serve them uh, in being in a, in a hands-on field or or is this one not working? Sorry. Or, uh, if they are in an area of management or, or something more along those lines. I hope I didn't predict something that you're not actually planning to do. Um, board member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the, um, the feedback from, um, the assembly. It's, it's I can assure you, it's given the board, um, additional perspective and food for thought as we move forward. Um, I think there, there's clearly a, a bridge, um, to ensure that everyone's on the same page. I tried to um, email member Braga, a list of our academies at our schools so that we're all talking the same language there. Mr. Perez, Vedia, absolutely encourage you to meet with Dr. Brian's team. I think that you'd find, um, a lot of helpful information uh, by connecting with Dr. Johnson, um, et cetera. Um, appreciate the comments from Ms. Zalatell regarding the, um, opt-out specifically. That was a board decision. So I, I think we need to um, own an answer for that. Um, I, I think it was a response in part due to um, the public having questions, some of which were asked today um, about part of the initiative that really doesn't roll out this next year, but the year after. And which is why where our focus is, this is a district for now, is this freshman academy. Some of the industry specific work, um, really won't begin until, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, with that said, um, it allows the bit of the district in a sense to, to bet on itself and build a program that students want to participate in. Um, and find valuable, um, and our families choose to opt into. Um, I personally wouldn't be opposed to revisiting that choice at some point. Um, but I, I think that the, the board allowing parents and families to have that choice if the program really isn't for them after experiencing the freshman academy and a taste of what that program is like moving forward into, uh, upperclassmanship um, is reasonable. And so, um, and I think the majority of the board did too. Um, with that said, please feel free to continue reaching out to us and, um, administrative partners. Um, we're happy to have these discussions and appreciate the feedback.
Assembly member Brawler.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, real briefly, I realized, uh, I can't, uh, miss an opportunity to also point out with transportation that as a planner, I wish we had not built our city so spread out and, and really difficult to use and that we have such a, uh, under um, uh, under-resourced or, or underutilized, uh, public transportation system. So that's going to take a long time, but I think yet again, it's important to understand that the land use and transportation choices that we've made for decades, um, play out in a lot of ways. And this is one of them, that it is hard to get folks across town, uh, in an easy way unless you happen to own a car and you're comfortable driving fifty miles an hour. Thank you.
I also did want to point out that the freshman academy class is undifferentiated. Uh, that will be that before students have made any choice, um, and it's, it's not sorted out in any manner at all. That is all kids in there together to give them a broad view. And we've not discussed it, but I'm sure as we move towards standing up the academies, we'll approach the municipality in the same way we're approaching businesses. In that you run things like the Anchorage wastewater, uh, treatment, um, you have you're, you're a major employer in the city of Anchorage, um, and, and a major workspace in our town. So like I say, I, I don't think that's been in any of our discussions, but as we move in that direction, I'm sure that will happen. Any other questions from anyone before we move on? Not seeing any hands. Um, next on our agenda is the SRO program and
I, I can get it started. I believe it was an ASD board member that put it on the agenda, but from my lens, I just wanted to thank the assembly for your support of the SRO program. I, I think it adds a lot of value, uh, to the school district and I look forward to collaborating with the incoming administration uh, to continue its success. I, I do want to speak very briefly as to why it's successful. I think the reasons get a little lost in the sauce. Uh, our SROs are wonderful, uh, professionals, but I think what people forget is that our SROs are embedded within the school community. They're there on a regular basis. Oftentimes they even are provided an office within the school. And that's important because, um, it's yet another trustworthy adult that's in the building so that when our students see something, they feel comfortable saying something. And oftentimes it's to our SROs and that prevents a lot of incidents that could escalate. And our SROs are fantastic partners. Um, certainly there, there's work to be done, um, but I, I think that can wait until, uh, the new administration comes on board. Um, we, we're just appreciative of the assembly and municipalities' investment in that program.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, the next item is a joint retreat. I assume the question is what part of Maui do we want to hold that retreat? I, I don't know who brought that forward as a
I think it was captured in the notes from our last meeting, but it wasn't the administration.
Assembly member Zalatell?
And, and just to, just a heads up, you, you need to get a lot closer to your mic because we can't hear you at all over here. Thanks.
So the idea of an assembly board, uh, retreat was my fault. Um, the idea is to possibly set aside a day a year, one time, right? We cover a lot of issues. We're kind of a mile wide and an inch deep. Um, and it would give us a chance to possibly go a little bit deeper on some issues that we have, um, really shared, um, interest in. Um, and I think of those as, uh, behavioral health, equity and transportation, you know, and really kind of give us a chance to, um, discuss them more fully. Um, these agendas always have to move really quick. We have two hours. Um, and really could even be a bit of planning for our future meetings, um, so that we are following up on and maybe creating some space for small groups to work on issues, um, throughout the year instead of just touching base at these joint meetings. We've done that in some areas. Safe routes to schools was one, one place. Um, but it seems like this is always a great exchange of ideas and we don't really ever set aside the time to create the capacity to do anything more about it. So it was an idea I had talked with, uh, past president Bellamy, um, a, a moment about it and we said we would revisit it. I think it fell off my radar, fell off everybody's radar and, but it made it to the agenda. So it's a thought. Um, I think it's open for discussion. I know everyone is pressed for time. Um, but it seems like there's a real intersection of some of the issues we're trying to address on the assembly and that you're trying to address. And can we team up and make sure we're being as collaborative? Um, and braiding and leveraging our resources as much as possible to address some of these really big issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, yes, I can see it being driven by particular issues that have come up or uh, it could be a regular thing, but we do have the opportunity for just open discussion. Um, assembly member Martinez.
Yes, just to, um, to speak into the potential of that retreat sort of space or that platform. Um, alignment is the word that runs to my mind and there are lots of areas of opportunity for alignment. But I wonder about the misalignment having, you know, being present. What I mean by that is be like, it's a little just having heard the last comment from the chair today, uh, described that, uh, the school district could potentially look at the municipality as like a workforce partner. That's not in the right sequence. Uh, to put it in a diplomatic term that others may know, may say it in a different way, uh, on the, on the street. But I think that if there's opportunities to look at retreats or to look at alignment, um, I wouldn't really be interested in a retreat for the sake of getting to know folks better and having coffee and bagels. Um, I wouldn't even be interested in a retreat for the sake of hearing what folks expect to do for the year and then come back and getting a report on that. If it doesn't produce alignment, I think alignment has to be the critical word so that we are moving both with respect to when folks are, if we're, if, if there's an opportunity for the budgets to change and we, we may get budget, come back to the assembly. Well, those relationships are so transactional, I, I, I'd rather us have real opportunities for deep alignment. And, um, if that's what a potential retreat could produce, I think it's going to be an incredible amount of work, but I really think about the three to five year alignment opportunities that we kind of are skirting around that if there's a dedicated space to drive, I would be interested in that. Aside from that, I would be, just be interested in the oversight role that we have and then you'll learn on the way.
Other, uh, assembly member Perez, Vedia.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add to what Mr. Martinez, he, he, he said exactly what I was going to say. Um, the only thing I would say is that I, I, I do think that there are unique opportunities, windows of time when that alignment can happen and when other times it's more challenging. And I, I do foresee that, uh, the coming few years, uh, are a potential opportunity for us to have a new kind of alignment or a stronger alignment than we've had in the past. And so um, I think if there's a desire to identify those areas of alignment and do some very specific work on that with both the school board, the assembly, with the, with, with, with the superintendent, with the mayor, that, I mean, there's some opportunity, I think, to do, do something that, um, was, uh, was more challenging in the recent past.
Uh, number Tolan.
Thank you. I just thought to jump on a couple of things. One, I, I definitely like alignment. You know, alignment to me is you make decisions, we make decisions that are consistent with that alignment when we're not together. And I'm just going to ask for clarification. I'm, I'm, I'll admit, I'm a bit lost in this whole worker conversation. Um, I view it as, as we educate our kids to successfully launch, to be independent, to earn a living, to have a career, to contribute to society. And I've used it as being a worker. So I'm, I, if someone can help me understand what I'm missing in this conversation, I'd really appreciate it.
Um, a reference to the academies and, uh, is that? I think.
Yeah, probably the academies.
Yeah.
I, I know, I know. It, it came up recently with Mr. Martinez and so.
Oh, um. I, I think one of the goals of the academies will be to expose our students to real world work situations. Um, not necessarily to have them go to work in that spot. But literally there are a lot of kids who don't understand what their parents do when they go off to work. They, they don't understand what happens in an office. They, they know retail, you know, the parts they see and transact with and everything. But they don't actually understand what goes on behind the scenes. Um, you know, I mentioned Anchorage wastewater utility because and for a lot of people, other than turning on the tap, they have no concept of what's behind that. And for some of our students, just understanding the equipment, the jobs, the, the day-to-day life. Uh, one of the, one of the plans for the freshman academy is that all students will take a field trip to the university just to see what an university is like, actually step on the campus, just in case they wouldn't ever do that on their own. Another is a field trip to a business just to see the front operation and the back operation and that kind of thing. And, and I, I mentioned municipality just because there's a lot of work that goes on municipality every day. We want students to see that too, be aware of it is, is all I know.
If I might.
Uh, Chair, consider.
Yeah, thank you. And if, just to the equity issues, if we look at the list, we I think Ms. Braga, somebody sent out an email that shared um, like Bartlett High School will have uh, construction, will have health and human services, will have business design. Um, then you'll go to Chugiak, it'll have health services and education and business. And then you'll go to Diamond, you'll have engineering, you'll have, uh, business IT, you'll have law. You'll have, um, a comprehensive health science understanding. You'll go to Eagle River, it will have business and engineering, it will have health sciences at East High, you'll have, um, industry and construction, so trades, which I don't dispute the value of. I love the trades, but it's like it's an interesting thing to think where is what going and for what reason? Then, um, some planning, but then there's, uh, hu- health and human services. So it's like service work, behavioral health aides. Right? That's like, so you're going to get tracked into working at the, at the bedside level, cleaning linens at Providence. You know, and then you pivot over to South and they get Academy of Leadership and Law and Business. They get Academy of Emerging Technologies. So they're going to be on the leading edge and they also get innovation and human services and health. And so the questions are all around, why is one school going to get one set of learning and another school going to get another? And where's it going to lead them? And is it realistic to say, well, a kid from East Betty Davis East High School is going to get on a bus and go all the way to Service High School an hour and a half ride every morning, an hour and a half ride home every day to get the leadership in law and business? But no, they're going to get tracked into anyhow, it's, that's the thing that I think is raising some alarms for people is how are we going to make sure fair is fair and we aren't you know, sending one set of people up for success that might have already started on third base versus those who are for the first time at the plate trying to get on base.
Thank you. That, that makes sense. Those trades versus white collar.
On trades, yeah, because I believe the trade is a great way to make a lifelong living. It's, it's all of those things. Yeah, exactly.
And assembly member Martinez, I wasn't sure if you raised your hand. Uh, member Higgins?
Thank you. Um, uh, I don't know if we're on academies or we're at the retreat. I'm going to go back to retreat if that doesn't screw everybody up. I'm not, I'm not really careful. I want to be careful here. Uh, on the, on the retreat issue, if we were to do it, I like the idea that it, it should be something that's productive. Um, and outcome-based and, and the like. There are all these issues out there though, not just transportation. We just did a presentation with, uh, uh, volunteers of America, Providence, dealing with ASD, what we're doing with homeless kids. That's a good example. Um, we've got, uh, issues. It has always been issues in the past of consolidation of programs or how we might help each other in operational issues that hasn't been done in the past. That's been so territorial. Uh, the goal has always been let's meet so you can give it to me as opposed to what's best for both outcomes. I think we've got a friendlier group right now that was willing to work together to say what works best. Um, in the nineties capital projects, the determination was the school district, we're going to do it better and cheaper. And, and so the community said, no, that's not going to work. Uh, but we've got, there are opportunities out there. If we come out with an agenda, there's ongoing issues that we have a mutual benefit for. Transportation, of course, is one with everything, but I think that could be a real value, but I would want goals saying these are the topics. Everybody gets a chance to put it in there and let's really focus on an outcome base. Cause I don't, uh, uh, alignment sounds good. It sounds like it's a mindset. I'm, I'm more outcome-based. Okay. I'm going to, at the bottom of the day, some, some agreements on what we're going to try to do and who's going to take leadership and the like. I think there's a lot to gain by that type of, of meeting. And I think we've got a group right now and I've been real pleased working with the assembly. That hasn't always been the case. Um, and, and I just think we have an opportunity right now. We haven't had in the past.
Board member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you everybody for the really robust discussions. Uh, so on, on the retreat, I absolutely support the retreat and would be willing to work with, um, a, a, a mini group or a work group to, uh, explore that more and come up with a, um, some dates, some possible dates and, and, and some items for that. Because I think, look at how much time we spent today just on the academies to make, to try to create a baseline of understanding. And we're still not there. So I think, uh, some topics will require more discussion than others, but uh, time is always a driver when we come, when we have our joint meetings. So I'm not willing to give up the joint meetings, but I am willing to seek out a, maybe a fall retreat. Um, where we have our budget, we know what we can do and we're already planning for the next and we're you know, we, 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 we have, um, we've identified those mutual cons- issues of concern that we can, uh, we can really move forward with, which would also include the academies. I also have some comments on the academies, but I will hold them to the, till we get to our individual comments. Um, but I, but I do think it might be useful if the superintendent explained how we came about the academies at each school. They were not random or arbitrary. Uh, we, uh, we surveyed the community and they identified by school what academies they were interested in. And so, um, I, I just want you to know they weren't random or arbitrary. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Assembly member Braga? Assemblymember Braga.
Thank you. I I I may not get support in this idea, but if we were gonna do a retreat, um, the kind of learner, like when I took a police ride along, that's eye opening. I think when you have these academies going a little bit, the the freshman group, um, it may be helpful if we set up where we go to different schools and see what it's looking like. You know, clearly not all twelve of us are gonna dump ourselves into a classroom, but we systematically divide it up. We come back later, we discuss some of the things we saw. Um, you know, it, getting into a school um, is worth a million words. So that that could be cool.
Chair.
Yeah, thank you. And just for new members and anyone who might not understand, a retreat does not mean we go behind closed doors and have a conversation in private. We are all subject to the open meetings rules and it would, it would be very similar to this structure and setup. It just would be in a time separate from when we would normally meet. And so um, I just want folks to understand, we're not contemplating something that is um, outside of public scrutiny. And that's fine. It's great. That's how we do our business. Everything we do is in public. And uh, to Ms. Bellamy's point, uh, yeah, we will not sacrifice the joint meetings. They're in the code and we meet quarterly because we need to meet. So this would be separate from all of that.
Other comments or questions, uh, Member Martinez?
Yes, thank you, Chair, for for reminding us that. I was thinking of the the way we did the housing retreat and thinking of all of those types of partners. But going back to the idea of the retreat um, alignment prioritization, and I think Mr. uh, Cameron, uh, Mr. Perez Verdia mentioned it as well with, and and the superintendent acknowledged it, with the new administration, um, I'd like us to really get very serious about this um, alignment to our workforce. Um, it, and hopefully that's a, that's an outcome of the retreat, which is a, to me, again, out of a sequence of steps, considering um, we are the public sector essentially. And we have all the job needs um, in every cast classification. So there is not one academy that's dedicated necessarily to the needs that I see of us. And I'll just give one pipeline of o- opportunity for us to really be thinking about this. Um, cuz we can do this probably clo- like closed door, meaning it seemed like the academy model came from like broad community participation, but we can develop an academy model in the public sector fundamentally, uh, just because of the work, the needs that we currently have. And so my encouragement was to the administration at the time and to H R early on um, was to really come aggressively toward you all with this, the needs of the municipality as a priority unwavering. Uh, I hope that if we have a retreat opportunity, that that sort of strategic alignment to the terms that we see, there's a new term, there's a three year window, so the three to five year window. And just thinking again, this is where we get to see deeper alignment opportunities to strategies, to strategies. And and I just will will hi- highlight that, like, uh, the fire department is doing an incredible pipeline job right now. And uh, and they have their explorer program, they're doing outreach and recruitment. There are always the equity questions and they focused even attention on uh, women and recruiting uh, diverse gender across the the fire department. And so it just seems an opportunity to really get deep strategic and probably that's going to be the sustainability fact. And I hope that we can come out from a retreat with a real robust strategy that we can all talk about with the public together and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments while we're on this part of the agenda? Um. I do, uh, it was suggested to me by member Higgins that we should take a moment to talk about school consolidations. Um, which did not amend the agenda, but I do feel like it's something that the district should update. Keep the the assembly apprised on. Call our superintendent Bryant to speak to that.
Sure. So currently, the the district is engaged in a conversation around rightsizing. So recently, we provided a survey to the community to understand a number of things, one being their support for a rightsizing plan and two um, some of the factors that weigh on their minds in terms of their support for rightsizing. And I I wanted to find the term rightsizing for a second. Um, part of that would be what we think of as a school closure, but rightsizing is a little bit broader than that. Sometimes that would mean closing a building, other times it would mean consolidating schools or programs. Um, another aspect to it would be the repurposing of a building. So for example, recently, we did close Abbott Luke Elementary School and that facility was repurposed for a charter school, the Alaskan Native Cultural Charter School, and that facility allowed them to pursue their mission um, with more space and and a facility that allows them to have things like hot lunch and that sort of thing. Um, so really, we're trying to look at the bigger picture because some of the the data that's compelled us to get to this point is the fact that statewide, we're losing people. Um, birth rates are down. Uh, in ASD, the number of students pursuing a correspondence modality of learning has more than doubled. Um, and as we look at our long-term projections, ASD may be serving close to thirty eight thousand students in ten years, and right now, we're at about forty three. Uh, so we need to have a serious conversation as to the future of our facility's health, and that might mean we have to consolidate our footprint. So where are we at today? We've completed our survey, we conducted a a poll, and we'll need to continue serving the community on different facets. We can get into that if you're interested on um, how the community feels and what are some of the guardrails and values of the community when it comes to selecting a school. And my intent is to provide the school board with a rubric that really defines the metrics that we'll use to determine which buildings would be eligible or appropriate for a closure or consolidation or repurposing. Um, we're going to ask them to approve that rubric and from that point, we'll apply it to all of our facilities and we'll determine how many come up. And uh, with the the board's blessing, we would provide a multi-year consolidation and rebound re-plan to the board. Um, there are dozens of facilities are serving under seventy percent capacity and the the budgetary implications aside, the reason that I'm interested in pursuing this is because when you have the the same level of flat funding for nearly a decade and way fewer students than we were serving ten years ago, what it means for our students is that they are more likely to be in a classroom that has multiple grade levels in their classroom. They're more likely to be sharing an elective teacher or a P E teacher. Um, and they're more likely to be in a school that doesn't have the necessary staffing to provide the supports and amenities that I think our family should expect in an ASD school. So really, this is our opportunity to determine what is the baseline student experience for our community and to consolidate as accordingly, to really strengthen our schools, not to weaken our portfolio. But right now, because of flat funding and the state of a number of different things, um, our schools need support. And this is one way that we can make our dollar go further. So of course, we welcome additional funding and uh, reliable support from the state, but we need to take action regardless of what happens in Juneau. And I believe the rightsizing plan is a path in the right direction, but we do need some community support to make sure we go about it in the appropriate way.
Member Higgins?
I uh, I I appreciate that. You know, some real good academic issues associated with it, but I wanna be real clear about one issue. And that is, the state funding is a factor in this thing. If we look at Inlet View, they've got two third grade classes with thirty each in it. You go down to lower forty eighth, the majority of class states all have effective classroom sizes. It'd be one to fifteen, there'd be four classes, not two. So when you look at the total amount with the Pika Sodom study, looking at adequate funding, we need a hundred and fifty million dollars plus, and we're right now not even filling the elementary teachers there for what we need to do. So we um, undercapacity assumes the current capacity and the sizes and a lot of factors here. When you convert that to Pika Sodom, a lot of this uh, underutilization goes away real fast. Uh, I don't think we can dream that we're gonna get full funding anytime in the near future, and there are other options here. We, the charter schools, for example, are in buildings that are not safe. Uh, our schools are built with institutional standings. We have people basically in strip malls, and that's not safe for those kids. We want all our kids to survive in case of earthquake. And so I like the idea that Abbott Loop is being used right now for the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. They are really happy with that change. There's others out there looking for opportunities to be in a, a school that provides better resources. But I just wanna make sure that while we're looking at the academic issues, somehow I know that we're doing it or that there's some some view here that um, uh, it's it's not related to the state inadequate funding is not fair. Because if we had full funding from the state, we would need more capacity uh, or use utilize more capacity within these schools. We would have to limit what we can do with closures. We wouldn't be making as much. If we make, you know, there's some benefits to it in line with that. I know that we have, uh, if we get uh, thirty kids or forty kids in a um, uh, third grade class, that you don't have enough teachers for things, so you end up combining some of those kids with the fourth, fifth grade or, you know, going back and forth with two grades that you're combining. That brings down academics. I understand that. That's that's a serious issue uh, and within it. But if you were down to one to fifteen in third grade, you'd have a much easier time, okay? Uh, you might have twenty in there and the other, but it's gonna be reasonable that you can break it out. When you're at forty, you really have to combine different grades because you don't have enough resources and teachers and funding to to be able to do it low classroom sizes. So I just don't want people to think that we're doing it that academics is the only factor, cuz the state at inadequate funding will be one of the reasons why we'll be closing schools. And I don't want the states to stood away from that because we're not getting adequate funding.
Assemblymember.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I think one thing that would be helpful, at least for me to understand, but may also be helpful for the public to understand as this conversation moves forward, is doing a longer look back around, um, you know, what's happened in the past. Cuz I think, um, I understand, you know, if you hear your school might be closing, right? You have an emotional reaction to that. And then in a vacuum, it looks, um, you know, it looks like a bad decision or it looks like something that um, that is going to be harmful. But I think the reality is that um, the district over time has had to reallocate resources, right? Um, and and of course, in the past, we had a growing population, and so probably we were building more schools. I also know we have land reserved for uh, schools like over in West Park and West Anchorage, that, you know, in theory, someday there may be an elementary school there. Uh, we're not in the space that we are adding population to our city, so we're not there. And I know there's other factors as well. Um, but I think it just, that longer look back, I think, would be helpful because um, cuz I know we've closed schools in the past. I know we've opened schools in the past. Um, you know, there there's schools that have changed location, et cetera. So I think just reminding the public of that bigger picture, cuz I do think um, it's not unique to this town, but we do tend to have a very short-term, narrow view, and especially we have such transient population. Of course, not everybody, but you know, there there's plenty of folks who weren't here twenty years ago and don't know kind of what that looked like. So I think that might be helpful just in the communication around this issue. Um, and also just being clear about um, uh, you know, it's it's really just how do you divide up the district worth of of kids in different grades, in different geographic locations, plus adding on the layer of the choice with charter, charter schools and so on. So it's really a, um, ultimately, it's an operations problem, right? And and so I think just reminding folks that that's, that's what that is, and it's not inherently a failure if you close a school, for example. Um, the other thing just to note, um, as that conversation goes forward, um, we are moving forward with the um, the Early Education and Childcare Fund, the ACE Fund, uh, the Marijuana Tax Funding. Um, and uh, myself, M- Member Perez Verdia and uh, Member Jacobs on the school board side. I think that's all the folks in this room working on it right now. Uh, we are actively uh, talking about uh, with our implementation team, recommended uses of those funds. In fact, that might be something to consider adding on the joint agenda in September, just another briefing, because we will be much further along. In theory, we will have an accountability board and that'll be part of the budget discussions. But anyway, to bring it back to this, um, the reason I bring all that up is because one of the things that was added to our charter is a directive to the accountability board and generally thinking about use of those funds. Two, uh, and I think the phrase is really specific, it's utilize um, uh, something like vacant or underutilized ASD facilities for early childhood education and childcare programs. Um, and of course, you know, to be determined what that looks like, but I just wanna note that now because there was clearly an intention and and basically saying to prioritize those first or to, you know, to look at that first. And so I think there is gonna be some intersection as we talk about those programs, whether it's a program that already exists that has an opportunity to move into a building like that or or expanding new ones. Um, right now, the the conversation has been around stabilizing the sector, especially the childcare sector. So um, so expansion is maybe not the the space that we're gonna be in anytime soon. But anyway, all that to say, I just wanna note that because I think those are parallel conversations. And again, it is a potentially a good use of those uh, facilities where it's appropriate. Um, and then either way, we will be further along in that conversation a few months from now. Thanks.
Thank you. Member Martinez?
Yes, to the question of the rightsizing question, obviously, I care about rightsizing transportation, rightsizing all of the different buckets that I think should be part of a holistic conversation. And not necessarily to the point of repurposing, but the question that I have in my mind is um, rightsizing real estate holdings and just in general. And to what extent does the, does the, the school district have real estate that it's holding on to as part of its portfolio? Independent potentially from future plans? Uh, I think of land and territory in East Anchorage um, that uh, had been considered for, uh, not necessarily considered, but people had hoped for potential opportunity for uh, housing in some of those areas, right? So they're like vac- totally vacant lots. And so my question, I don't know necessarily, I don't want the answer today, but to what extent does real estate play a role into your financial portfolio, if it does at all? And if not, to what extent is the rightsizing of the portfolio of real estate holdings a part of the conversation? Uh, if and it isn't, can it be?
Great question, Member Martinez. In short, it is a part of the conversation, but step one is to come to consensus on the rubric for how we'd identify a school for closure or consolidation. And of course, when we look at a building, we have to understand what is its utility in its current state. And there's a certain uh, degree of deferred maintenance to where it might be more appropriate to demolish that building or to completely reimagine that space. It's too premature to speak to specific parts of town because we need to give the community an opportunity to weigh in on what their values are and to provide that to the school board. Um, but part of the rightsizing will be that repurposing of facilities that could speak to some of the opportunities that you've alluded to.
No, Chair, this would be a great topic for a retreat. Um, because there's, my my hope would be that we are not necessarily rightsizing to the, to the, to a rubric that is as limited as the potential advantage point that the school district may have, considering that we have to really think about the bigger picture of rightsizing all of the public assets to be able to fit and work with each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? While we move off the agenda items. Seeing no hands, we are at member comments. Um, partially just to make this easy on myself, we'll start with.
I'd like to recommend we take up public comments first to make sure if there is anyone, we tackle that. And if there isn't, then we know we've offered it.
Without objection, we'll reorder the agenda that way. Is there anyone in the the room from the public that wishes to speak? And. Seeing no hands, uh, and not having anyone online. Uh, we'll touch back just to check when we come to that part of the agenda. Uh, back on member comments, I was gonna start with Assemblymember Johnson and work our way around the room.
Uh, I guess just uh, thank you to the school board and the superintendent for uh, I think a robust conversation and then just for the work you guys do. I think it always be a tough job, but certainly given present circumstances, it's um, extraordinary undertaking. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Um, something Member Braga shared earlier uh, made me think. So um, I appreciate, we've had a lot of uh, high school students come through our meetings. You know, they come in and sit, we sign their papers, uh, they introduce themselves. And I really appreciate that. Um, I think it's also, um, I do wonder kind of what those kids think about uh, government, you know, sitting through what is, you know, arguably a boring and very technical meeting, right? And so it makes me think, how how do we um, bring maybe not just, you know, assembly members, but bring government into schools? Um, and and I appreciate the academies is gonna be one really great way to do that. Another way is, um, I think Mr. Perez Verdia mentioned, just coming to a classroom and presenting. And and I'm not sure how to start that um, um, relationship, right? But I think it would be, um, I just wanna put on the table, I think it would be a cool idea to think about how um, uh, other ways that we can engage students, um, maybe, you know, outside of our meetings, but still in the business of our our work, um, or or better in meetings. I'd love to hear feedback on that. And then also how um, I'd love to hear feedback on that. And then also how um we can really introduce folks to local government in other ways, whether it's coming to talk. Um you know, and I know that's often coordinating with an individual teacher, but it's hard to know where to start, you know, that the proposing that. And of course, there's other um great things to to present, you know, there's transportation, there's planning, that's that's my bias, but there's plenty of other parts of government that are very important. And so um I think that and maybe that's something to talk about at a future retreat as well, but um. But I would love the opportunity to explore that more, um because for myself, I didn't know what local government was, wasn't exposed to it until many years down the line. Um and so I think it's a great thing to just, you know, help with the civic engagement, really. Thanks.
Assembly member.
Thank you. Um it's making me remember my time on the school board and and how strongly I feel about some of these these things. Um I um I also appreciate the work that is being done here and and um and I'm excited about some of the opportunities. And also worried about some of the things that I see coming down the road. Um I the one thing I guess I'm I'm walking away with is that um you know, at the heart of. Schools is really for me, the interaction between the teacher and the student and the learning that happens in that sort of dynamic environment. And and how well we take care of that teacher and how well we take care of that student so that they they can have that experience. And um and I think that's really where the magic happens and that that um that and I what I don't want to lose is I don't want to lose. You know, that. Um and so I, as we think about bringing industry in into schools, as we think about. You know, all of the things that consolidating buildings and all of that, that's really what is most important to me. And and I think that um that uh that, for instance, many of these academies, the the I would say. That at least fifty percent of what every child needs to know to be able to be successful in any industry is really a lot of the same things. Right? It's how to problem solve, it's how to interact with others, it's how to it's how to have cri- critical thinking, all these things is what you learn. As you begin to learn in school, right? And so so that doesn't have to be tracked, that doesn't have to be separated out, there isn't. That a lot of that is just how we grow. Uh and so. I I just want to make sure that that we are both being responsive to what the communities are telling us, what industry is telling us. But I also want to make sure that we're remembering that that the teachers and administrators are professionals. And and understand how how the brain works and how learning happens and how child development happens. And that is, that's something that 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 we need to really rely on in terms of our choices, in terms of how we structure schools. So for instance, I love the fact that we go to the community and say, what do you want, right? But but we also need to go to to the to the researchers and the teachers and say, what? What is, what do we know that children need to be successful in their life? And let's work on tho- those things as well. So um so I appreciate the conversation. Um um but I do worry that um when most of the narrative coming out of our schools. Is mostly around jobs and industry. When I know like why, when I heard from from Sven, so some of the apparently some of the the kindergarten. Learning scores are are gonna be really exciting to this year. And so we're gonna, we're seeing magic happen within these classrooms. And I want to make sure that that's a big part of the narrative as well and that we're we're talking about that. The last thing I'll just say is, when I was on the school board, we were trying to ma- make a commitment. That 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 not every single conversation was about buildings and buses and pipes and budgets, right? I understand that those are things that are really important, but that we we talked about learning and we talked about teachers and we talked about kids. Uh and so I think that's an important thing to make sure that we involve. Thanks.
Assembly member Littlefield.
Well, thank you very much for having me here and absorbing all this. Uh this is all pretty new to me, but I'm very excited about the freshman academy. I have a lot of questions and I look forward to more conversation on that. Um other than that, it's it's very interesting what's going on and I appreciate all the work you you folks do.
Assembly member Barnes.
Thank you. I appreciate being here as well and the conversation and the effort of time and sunny weather. I'll keep it short.
Thank you. I um I wanted to kind of echo something I heard from Member Salt earlier that. I really don't see trying to get kids to come out of the school experience as contributing members of society is turning them into bots. It's just reality um in my mind. The other thing I wanted to say um to Member Brawley, she was talking about possibly. As we look at school consolidation, if we had early childhood living uh or early childhood centers in those facilities would be cool. But I'm in a space in my life where I'm looking at seniors and they also need places to go during the day. Um we just brought my mom to Turnigan Social Club, which is wonderful. But if we had more places where seniors who need a little help could go in the day. It's helpful to families and it could also be a good uh partnership with early childhood. Um having seniors reading books and whatnot. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Member Salt.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll um I'll go to the academies as well and I appreciate the effort in doing surveys and finding out what the communities want. But I'll, I can't remember the crossism that would come out, but if I was at a plumber's convention and my roof was leaking, I guarantee they'd find a plumbing solution to my roof. So when you go to survey these communities, I I'm probably not surprised with the answers you got. So something you may want to look at is in a way flipping the script and offering um. The complete opposite of some of these schools, because they're going with what they know. And I think part of the academies expose them to something different and something to make them more or make them reconsider what what is possible for them. Thank you.
Assembly member Martinez. I appreciate all of the work that folks have done. I really appreciate Member Salt's flipping the script comment as a segue for me. And I'll just leave with my closing comments. I hope that we keep these values in our in our uh focal point, which is. Um lifelong learning is not in a box. The city is the classroom, is the laboratory. There is ton, there are tons of people with talent in our community that could be connected to the learning environment. Who are not credentialed as educators at this particular time, delivered experience. And fundamentally for me, I I. As a homeschooling, a full-time homeschooling dad, um fundamentally, and I'll just leave it briefly. Forced to step back into that role because of the deficiencies in the current landscape for high school. My fundamental role is to help my son learn how to learn. Across all categories, so they can show up and have the the basics of learning how to learn in any condition. And and I'll close with this, if I hope folks remember the the the, there was a television show called Fame. Back in the days and Fame, I wanna live forever. Uh that school was the the LaGuardia School for the Performing Arts in New York City. And uh that school, similar to the high school I went to, which was a specialized high school. Required that students traveled all points of the city to that location. And so it's possible in a city where we have robust public transportation to make sure that. And without yellow buses, to make sure that that type of investment in getting kids across places so that they can have the most robust. Because you're not going to have a fame times three, but you're going to have a a solid opportunity in one particular place. So that transportation question still raises up and that was kind of some of what I think that the earlier vision was. And I just wanted us to leave with that. Remember that uh it worked for fame. Board member Higgins.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um appreciate the conversation today. Um I also um I think the idea is brilliant. Um regarding focusing on things that aren't uh buildings and budgets, um the board. Um carves out sections of our meeting and actually tracks how much time we spend on on those kinds of topics. Uh that might be an idea for um future agendas um for this joint group. Um so appreciate that. And then lastly, just wanted to um welcome Member Littlefield, uh recognizing this is his first meeting. Appreciate it.
Assembly member Salakel.
Yes, thank you. Um I find these meetings always really enlightening. Um and that's why I suggested the retreat ideas, just to get a little bit deeper. Um I wouldn't be me if I didn't raise this issue um is that. I really would like to hear more about how students with disabilities will be integrated into the career academies. I spent, that's how I started my career in Alaska, is um doing special education work. Um from the representing parent's side of things. And so I really want to ensure. Um that those accommodations are made and that the access is there, um because that's a part of our population. We we can't just overlook. Um every intervention seems to um or new idea seems to forget about it or it's just appended later. And if we really think about it from the outset, I think it's really important. Um and then I just share with you all, um this conversation is really interesting. So when I was in high school, I went to a consolidated school in a northern part of a county. Um I've been driving twenty plus miles to school since I was fourteen. Um so I grew up in a really rural area. Um and college wasn't on the table. Um and I joined the military briefly. And then I was the first in my family to go to college and I went into considerable debt to go to college. Um and I made some value choices for myself that weren't visible in my community. Um and so I had to flip my own script. Um and so I really resonate with what Mr. Salt said. Um and it's really about creating kids that or fostering kids to be able to go out and write their own script. And and to think critically about what they might want to explore. Um in our household, we said elementary school was to learn how to read and be a good person. Middle school is about how to be organized and continue to be a good person. And high school is to find that love of learning in whatever way you want. It's not about the grades per se or a particular career path, but these are these kind of three philosophies we have for each of these phases in life. And really, that's from my lived experience and learning because no one put out there that just wanting to learn. Was something that you could, you could want to do and enjoy. It was always focused on how to make money, how to make ends meet. And um I wouldn't be here today if I had just stuck with the graduate high school, go find a job. My folks thought I was crazy to go to school and to take out the kind of debt, let alone go to law school and take out more debt. Um and so it really is opening up what those possibilities are. Thanks.
Board member Higgins.
Thank you. Uh first of all, I want to thank everybody for being here. One of the discussions I keep hearing, no matter what the subject, it goes back to the student. And I really appreciate that because I've heard that over and over again, the issues go back to that. We're trying to be responsive to the public, but our obligation is to the student first. We've taken some pretty uh aggressive steps, I think somewhat, whether it's start times and other issues. And with the idea that status quo isn't okay because that doesn't change anything as far as outcomes. And so please be aware that while as 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 the superintendent made reference, oops, as the superintendent made reference to. We've got a a you know, evolving uh situation top to bottom. But the comments, uh even the um uh I was surprised a little bit with them. I didn't know we were gonna have a talent for America's Got Talent uh contest. Uh or uh thing, but I appreciate that too uh within it. I uh the issue of academies, only comment I'll make is that the Department of Labor for about seventy or eighty years worth of data. Has put together, has a general aptitude test. And a a general, it's a uh G A T B, general aptitude battery deal. And it puts all jobs in twenty percent of the categories based upon skills, knowledge, and abilities and and general generality. And the test is, they maintain ballot for all for all jobs, you know, because it's gonna tell you what area you're gonna be best. And what we're doing with the academy, I think, is putting jobs in as many different categories as we can. It gets them the exposures, gets the connection, doesn't mean they're gonna come out in that particular job, but it gives them the opportunity. And if they're like me, they start off engineering, they they say, oh, nope, not gonna happen. Uh but it gives them a chance to explore different things and not not restrict them to say, when you come out, you have this job. I don't see that at all, so I'm not concerned about that part implementing it in a big deal, but I do appreciate that. Uh and I do like the idea of a retreat with a con- with a really concrete list of what we're gonna try to accomplish. I think um this group is much more committed to working together cooperatively, not not being territorial. Got a new uh mayor coming in and I just think it's a, it's probably an ideal time. It isn't always been the case in the past, but I think right now it is something that I would look forward to seeing happen. Thank you.
Member Bellamy had to drop off. Uh we do have member uh board member Donnelly online. Do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. I respect the people's time since we're over time for the meeting. I don't have any comments right now.
Thank you. And Chair Conso.
Thanks. I'll do my best to be brief. Um. I would note that we do get some participation from the schools at our meetings, which I really appreciate. They don't generally willingly come up and introduce themselves. We put them on the spot. Um and it also is part of that learning process, get up and speak in front of your government. Um and mostly they come from Chugiak and Eagle River. It would be awesome if some government classes in Anchorage would follow the lead of Chugiak and Eagle River. And uh entice their students to come participate in our meetings. To that end, we have robust uh application for our youth member position. We haven't finished the process. I have nineteen or eighteen resumes I'm going through right now. It's quite a bit of work. Um but anticipated our next meeting, we'll have a new youth member. And then um just to note on my personal experience, nineteen eighty-something in a career process in my high school. I I think I mentioned this once before, it's one of our meetings that um it it told me to to be one of three things. A pastor, an undertaker, or a politician. And so I'll leave it to you to decide which one I've become. And um. On the theme of career academy, there there's this old saw that the states are the crucible of how government is supposed to work in our country. But really, local government is the crucible inside of the crucible. And um so just so you hear concerns raised. That means the heat is rising in the crucible and what happens when it hits the right temperatures, it flex and it flows and then it becomes the thing you're trying to make it. And so from where I sit, don't take these criticisms as any reason to slow down. It's in fact information as you speed up and move toward the goal. Because it can do great things for the city. So that's where I would leave you. Don't um shy away when the heat turns on in the crucible.
Um thank you very much. And I will close just by saying uh. You know, as a board member, we try to stay focused on what happens in the classroom and how kids turn out. And as I'm sure all of you are aware, there are all these other moving pieces. We're a transportation system, we're a food service system. We're a warehouse, we're health services, we're all these other things that aren't directly on our mission. But but we spend an awful lot of time managing them in the hopes that they make the outcome right and it empowers our teachers to do. What they are best at. I I do want to say that for a long time, I've always felt like every assembly member I talked to. Was thoughtful, there to help and uh certainly the the group we have today, I think is there, really appreciate it. Um there have been times it's been a little more adversarial or less, uh but I do think everybody tries to understand where we're at and what we're trying to do. Um that said, I was at the Halo meeting last night and one of the people who had decided to run spoke at the end. Made the really interesting observation that he was running because it seemed like. Every everything in Alaska and Anchorage right now was about managing our decline. And we kind of crested that hill for a long time. We were faced with increasing numbers every year. We had to get more teachers, we had to find more space. We had to get housing, people were coming in and and et cetera, et cetera. And somewhere we crested a hill to where we didn't expect to have as many students next year as this year. And and then it happened another year and another year. And I I think without realizing it, we shifted into that mentality of how do we? Um how do we manage that controlled descent, hopefully not into terrain as a as a pilot might say? Uh but we all want Anchorage to level off and to grow and and in a a really good way. And that, I think, is the challenge that may bring the assembly and the school board to work more closely together. We can't just manage our growth anymore because it's not there. We we have to figure out how to stop our decline and level and climb again. And uh I really am encouraged by the idea of partnership and going forward together. That's everything I have to say. Uh Superintendent, did you have any additional remarks?
Well said, Mr. President. I just know it's an open door. Um if you'd like to speak with me or my team about anything that we talked today. And we'd love to bring you into the fold as it relates to sharing information about the academies, raising great concerns, and we want to be a part of that solution. So it's a great program for everyone. Thanks.
And come fall, you will always be welcome in schools, uh welcome to come see the the freshman classes, we launch it. And uh academies a year after and all of that. Without any further comments, um a motion to adjourn. We are in adjournment. Thank you. We are in adjournment. Thank you.